We'll have a moment of silent meditation and a pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call to order this meeting of Monongah County Commission for March 4th, 2020. It's 10:00 AM and all three commissioners are present and we'll begin by consent and approval. Good morning, Brenda.
Morning.
Morning.
We have 13 exonerations for $2,651.68. Vouchers General County Fund, $245,444.03. Cole Severance, $37,500. Magistrate Court, $4692.911.587.30. Chestnut Ridge Park, $713.91. Mason Dixon Park, $227.15. Assessor's valuation, $6,019.25. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, $11,774.18.911.157.45. Chestnut Ridge Park, $161.62 for voucher total of $302,631.81. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, Montague County Planning Commission, Monongah County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Bannan Dilapidated Enforcement Agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, Region 6 Planning and Development Council, Historic Landmarks Commission, and the Mountaineer Trail Network Authority. Fiduciary orders for April, or I'm sorry, March 4th, 2020, and itemized statement of services for George Armistead.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I don't see any listed, but are there any personnel or new employee?
The assessor's office has one.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
There's a wall there.
Yeah, there's a wall, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Okay.
Just say the right date on here, no one. Yes, that's not a problem. Thank you.
Okay. Here from the Montague County Assessor's Office, seeking approval to hire Mrs. Ms. Ryan Yaske Week. She will be taking the replacement position for Sue Ann Solomon, who left us earlier this year. Her start date will be March 2nd, 2020. She'll be a full-time tax deputy for the Personal Property Department. 35-hour work week, benefit-eligible, probation 90 days, and supervisor Amy Guttani.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you, guys.
Are there any other employee or personnel changes? Hearing none, we will open comments from the public. We now open comments from the public. If you have something that you wish to speak, we expect to give you three minutes to allow you to speak. Hearing none.
Okay.
Morning.
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 Herman Reed, Mayor of Star City. I brought a letter in from our council that approved to show the county commission that we disapprove of this annexation.
This, I think, would come up underneath the public hearing instead of public comment.
That will be part of the record.
Not to interrupt you, but, okay?
Okay, so you want me to wait?
Yeah, about two minutes.
All right, well, good morning anyway. Good morning, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, okay? Seeing no one else, we'll close this portion of the public comment, okay? We now have a proclamation, which is the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I apologize in advance for the length of this proclamation. We didn't write it, the Secretary of State did. Proclamation recognizing the centennial celebration of the 19th Amendment and declaring March as West Virginia Women in History Month. Whereas in 1848, people gathered in Seneca Falls, New York, for the first time for a national display against the unfairness of depicting women, of depriving women of the right to vote. And whereas the fight for women's suffrage lasted more than 72 years among women of all walks of life, political views, and demographic backgrounds asking for the right to vote their opinions at the ballot box. And whereas on June 4th, 1919, both the United States House of Representatives and the United States Senate passed the 19th Amendment and sent the measure to the states for ratification. And whereas on March 10th, 1920, West Virginia became the 34th state to ratify the 19th Amendment. And on August 26th, 1920, Tennessee became the 36th state to ratify the amendment, making it the law of the land and guaranteeing millions of women the right to vote. And whereas while most of the women who began the effort to secure the right to vote never lived to see enfranchisement of women, for 100 years now, their daughters, granddaughters, and great-granddaughters have made their votes heard at the polls. And the elections of 2020 see an unprecedented number of women running for public office. And whereas the centennial anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment represents a historic milestone to be celebrated. Now therefore be it resolved that the citizens and government leaders of Montague County find it fitting and proper to recognize the leadership role that West Virginia played in the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution and to acknowledge that our federal, state, and local governments have benefited immensely by the public service provided by women throughout West Virginia. Be it resolved that Montague County celebrates the 19th Amendment in an effort to promote the core values of our republic as promised by the Constitution of the United States, to inspire future generations to cherish and preserve the historic precedent established under the 19th Amendment. Be it further resolved to celebrate and commemorate West Virginia's ratification of the 19th Amendment and the role of women in our democracy. Now therefore, we, the members of the County Commission of Montague County, West Virginia, do hereby declare the month of March as West Virginia Women in History Month and urge all citizens to celebrate the women who have served as leaders in local government in Montague County throughout the past 100 years. Signed on this day, the 4th of March, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. I move that we approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded, for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
And thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you give it, we'll sign it right now, so.
Thank you. And thank you all. We certainly do want to recognize what has transpired in the past 100 years. History is important and the history of them is. I always said that if I needed something done, I would try and find a woman to do it because it's always easier for me. We now have a public hearing that's regarding the proposed annexation application submitted by the town of Granville. The, we will first hear from that individual or individuals who will present the report upon this. After that, we will then hear from all those in favor of said annexation. Then after that, we will hear those who oppose said annexation. Then time will be given for rebuttal by the presenters. After that, then we may ask any questions that we may so desire, okay? Everybody understanding the format? We will begin and open this public hearing. For those who wish to present, if you would come forward, identify yourselves, please, as you come forward, and we will proceed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here on behalf of the town of Granville. My name is Patricia Lewis, I'm the mayor from the town of Granville. The town of Granville has set forth a request to annex the herein described property by a minor boundary adjustment. We feel that we've met all the necessary requirements as set forth by West Virginia state law as well as provided the additional information and clarification asked for previously by your governing body. The areas contained in this petition are detailed in the meets and bounds map and property descriptions prepared by Potest Engineering, which were submitted to you earlier for your review. There are no businesses or residences affected by this annexation petition. It does encompass roadway that is owned by the West Virginia Department of Highways. And a letter previously submitted states that the DOH had no objection to the annexation of the roads. The property we are requesting to be annexed is contiguous to the corporate limits of Granville and does not infringe on any other jurisdiction. No other municipality has made application for the annex of this property. The proposed annexation is not a method to generate taxes or any other revenue for the town of Granville. The proposed annexation will allow the police department, fire department, and street department to travel to the University Town Center without leaving our corporate limits. It will also grant us the ability to handle traffic calls and other emergency calls without calling for or waiting for assistance from other county agencies. We have 24-hour fire and police staff, and our street department is on call 24 hours a day as well. There are no freeholders, firms, corporations being asked to be involved in the annex process. The primary affected parties are the West Virginia Department of Highways and the Granville Volunteer Fire Department. The Granville Volunteer Fire Department supports this request to incorporate the property that they own on Route 19.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask you?
Yes, sure.
Please.
I will now hear from anybody else speaking in support of this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Butch Renter, chief at the Granville Fire Department. We're in favor of this for the simple fact is we don't have a training center in this county. Matter of fact, the only training center close here is two counties away. So when they go, our firefighters have to go get certified, certified in firefighter one, they've got to travel two counties away, which is taking resources away from here. If the town is allowed to annex this property, we are proposing at that site, there's a 30-foot by 100-foot concrete pad already there, that we're going to put a training center for everybody in the county to use free of charge. That's PD, EMS, fire, Green County Fire, Preston County Fire if they want. So then we'll have to travel two counties away. But the only way this can happen is if this property is placed in the town of Granville because there's no way we can afford using, pulling in resources, backhoes, using, I could use the street department to help set all this up. I've already talked to Longview, Longview Power. They're looking at props that I can put down there for confined space. They're just going to give them to us. Do confined space training and stuff like that where it's in controlled environment so you don't take a chance to get somebody hurt or killed, training. This unit will also have that, but they're going to give us props to bring down there. If I can, I'd like to bring this up.
Yes, sure.
That's a letter of support from the Monongah County Fire Association.
Thank you, chief.
On this training facility.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, like I say, and the nice thing about that is it's, it's close to everything. We take off a train. It's like, Longview wants to come down and train, do confined space down there. Well, basically, that's about the only place we can go, there or Fort Martin. And now we've got down there, now I've got all my people almost to state line. I get something back in town or Westover, Star City, you know, Mutiway, something like that. I've got to run all the way back in town. So at least here, all departments are, you know, it's close, it's centralized. So they could come down there and train, and they can, and if they get a call, they can take off from right there. You know, it's the farthest ones you're going to get, Blackfield Way,stown, G-Lake. But it's still, it's close, interstate's right there. They could jump on and get, heading back to their own area. If they're two counties away down there, Harrison County, it ain't going to happen. But there was one other thing I was wanting to say, like, draw a blank on me. But, you know, if you have any questions, that's, you know, that's all I could say.
Thank you.
Would just benefit the community and all, fire, police, EMS, street department.
Next to speak in support?
Good morning. My name is Craig Corcoran, chief police of the Granville Police Department. And I just want to offer reassurance to this commission and to the public that the purpose of this annexation is not revenue-related via traffic law enforcement efforts, but to increase the safety for those who travel these roadways. Our officers are often in the area of these roadways because of Granville's existing proximity to them. So response time to emergencies such as crashes will be minimal. I hope you grasp the town of Granville's sincere intentions for annexation. And Granville's first responders and street department are very capable of securing and maintaining these roadways. And we are eager to meet the challenge of increasing the public's safety in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor of the annexation? Hearing none, we'll begin with those who oppose said annexation.
Let me draw this again. Herman Reed, Mayor of Star City. I have a letter there that council approved that I come and speak against this annexation. Well, we have a big problem with crossing Star City Bridge years ago. Excuse me. Granville went across our high-water mark, and we have maps to show that. And they moved their sign down to Jim Town where their sea limits, basically landlocking us across that bridge. My council approved last meeting to hire a surveyor. And that's part of the area we want surveyed to see exactly where our Star City limits are. I believe the whole bridge has always been Star City. But Ron Rittenhouse can't find a picture that has Star City on the other side of the bridge. We don't understand this annexation. They say they're just taking in the roadways. Okay, how about five years from now? What about the properties on both sides of that roadway? Star City can't try to annex, no one else can. Granville's got it landlocked. So I don't understand. I'm just saying, if we had University Town Center, would be satisfied. Apparently Granville's not, so you guys have a nice day.
Thank you. Anyone else choosing to oppose said annexation? Please come forward if you want to speak.
Good morning, Mark Ambrogno with Jackson Kelly. I'm here on behalf of one of our clients, main sanitation that provides waste collection along the routes that are proposed to be annexed. Kenny came to the last meeting and has previously expressed his concern over this annexation as it may impact his waste collection service along that route. His minor saying that he has not been contacted by anyone from Granville to discuss those concerns or received any assurance that Granville would not begin to provide trash collection in that area. And so to express that, I mean, it is part of a minor boundary adjustment application. And it's a required portion to describe that impact. Wouldn't seem like, if there is no intention to provide that service and to allow main sanitation to continue providing service there, it would, would not take away from the application to state that. And then I also would just note that, as you all, I'm sure, are aware, the legislature passed a bill this past week that impacts the minor boundary adjustment statute. It was passed February 20th, delivered to the governor on the 28th. And because we are currently in session, he has five days accepting Sunday to make a decision on whether to sign that into law, let it become law without signature, or return it to the legislature with a veto. We're on that deadline either today or tomorrow as far as his decision. And so that would apply back to the 20th when the bill was passed, which questionably implicates the ability to proceed with an annex, annexation without consideration of the new statute and whether that is being complied with as part of that.
I hired Mark to speak for me, you know, because, you know, maybe you don't know, but I have brain lesions and it affects my communication skills, okay? So I'll try to make sure and deliver this property for you, okay? Granville has not followed through on our last discussion as far as contacting us or even discussing this. They stood right here and said that there's no one that's impacted by my rights that I have. I start at the Pennsylvania state line and I work up to the town of Granville currently. I work up into the town of Star City. I have no man's land in the surrounding area around Morgantown. I have watched Westover take in my area on the other side. My good neighbors don't even consider me for a bid when they're using services similar to mine. In the town of Granville, right now, you have a Fayette Waste dumpster sitting there, okay? Service that I provide, okay? I pay a lot of tax money here in this county, my companies. No consideration, that's very upsetting to me that that's how my neighbors treat me.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak opposing said annexation?
My name is Jim Luzader, I own property in Osage. And I also reside in Star City right now. And I don't think that, I heard the chief police say that wouldn't be no income coming in from the roads and stuff. But why do they need the property from the Star City Bridge up to Route 7 and 19 going there when the fire department don't need that for the annexation to go in into Osage? What he's talking about, why do they need that piece of property? But the thing is, as the mayor of Star City said, that, you know, the council approved for them to have an annexation for their surveyor to do. So I think what the county commission should do until the Star City can have the survey done to see if they own the road on the other side of the river, put it on hold until the survey's done. And that way, everybody be satisfied with the true of what's going on here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. One more opportunity because I have a wall there, okay?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm a property owner along this road. And I feel that even though they're not annexing my property, they will have an impact on my property, and I oppose.
Did you state your name?
Yes. Mark Myers.
Thank you, Mark.
And I, I feel that this will have an economic impact on my property, and I object. As for the fire training center that they want to build, there's a reason it's in Clarksville. It's ran by Reese, it's not ran by a city or a county. And the city or county doesn't have control in training firemen. The center that they're talking about at Osage was the former Consol Building. And I think it was a great injustice that Granville be giving the administrative over that building that it should have been the Scotts-run Cassville Fire Department. It is in their area, and it should have been their building. And I object to the police.
Excuse me.
Their police department, four years ago, almost to the day, and I have it documented, at 1:30 in the morning, pulled me over coming up through Granville to, Granville to do a sobriety check as I was on my way home from work. And I asked the officer at that point in time to call in and make the call to 911, and he refused. They're out of control. I object. I feel that this will have an economic impact to my property, and I object.
Okay, thank you. Next. Hearing none, we will allow Mayor Lewis for rebuttal, please.
Just briefly, I can't, I can't see, I can't go back 27, 28 years when we did that original annexation, so I don't, I don't have a reply for that. That happened in 19, like, 93, I think. I thought that was all settled, as I stated before, with the, with your people in the, in your mapping department. So I don't have an answer for that. I mean, it happened, you were part of that when you were mayor of Osage. Jim was part of that because we actually approached the commission at the same time. As far as the property down in Osage, as you heard our chief speak, that is in their, their due area. That is not Cassville's due area. So I cannot respond to the, the bill that's in Charleston. That was one question I was hoping to ask you all ahead of time. And I wasn't able to do that, whether that would have an impact on our request. So that's certainly your decision whether, you know, you want to wait and see. Of course, our original annexation request was one almost a year ago. And we've just gone through, you know, redoing maps, redoing meets and bounds, which you've asked us to do. So I don't know if that's a consideration or not. But as far as our police department goes, you know, I can't go back four years and say that one of our officers pulled someone over in a sobriety check. I don't have a response for that as well. I know we don't get any complaints on our police department. So I think the statement that they're out of control is inaccurate and inconsiderate. But I think that pretty much covers.
Thank you.
Oh, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
You know, we did meet with Kenny Jacks- You know, we did meet with Kenny Jackson and his wife, actually in our office, and I gave her the number of our city attorney to contact about his sanitation pickup. So, I mean, town of Granville doesn't pick up even at the town center, because we're not capable. So I really am not sure why he thinks we're trying to take any of his business, because that, that is inaccurate. And I, whether they contacted our city attorney, which is Mike Solomon, I don't think so. Mike never told me that they did, but they were given that information.
Thank you. Do either commissioners have any questions at this time?
I just have a couple, just for more clarification. And any three of you can answer it. I'm still a little confused. The property in Osage, where you're going to have the training, who owns the property? Who runs the property? And that's what I'm really confused on right now.
That property was given to us for a dollar.
Okay.
All the buildings and three and a half acres. We sunk $450,000 in it and renovated it. That's where we currently have bingo, one night a week, and they do your poll voting there for, I don't know what district that is, but, you know, we, we let them have that for the voting. Also, right now, there's some stuff down there. The water treatment plant needed a place to store and transport workers. That's why that's down there. That contract's over with June. They're done, they're pulling out of there and stuff. That's why we want to use, because basically, right now, we use that building four hours a week for bingo. And, you know, it's.
So, so my question then is, why do you need to annex it if, for a training center, if not just giving the money there to put it in? I, I, that's what I'm, I don't understand.
Volunteer side cannot fund that. $50,000 a month from that levy don't pay nothing. I got a 400, or 300, well, right now, $350,000.
What about Granville paying for the, I mean, I'm just throwing it out.
I put in our training budget just now, $15,000. March 13th is the end of the AFG grant. That unit cost $192,000. I'm going to use that money out of that budget from the town side, $15,000, if we get the grant, to put to that training center.
Okay.
But, like I say, we can't do it right now, not with us paying utilities down there, buying, you know, buying fire trucks, buying equipment, buying air bottles, buying all that stuff. Matter of fact, I even thought about doing the training center and air packs, and then replace our air packs, just instead, when we, if we'd get the grant, replace the air packs, just give them to that. That's a way there, when people come down to train, there's extra air packs down there. They don't have to use the new ones and stuff. Ours, ours is actually outdated.
Thank you.
Okay. One more question, but not on that. You said the street department is going to help maintain the roads, but if it's a state road, how, do you, I, I just, I just asked for clarification, like, snow and stuff. How do you have a signed agreement? Has that all been worked out? Just, I'm just asking.
We do not.
Okay.
But just like, you know, the potholes on dense runs, sometimes I can call Dave McCormick, I can get some pole patch. I mean, we have the ability to respond if, if it was icy, if there's a wreck down there.
Right.
I mean, we have the equipment and the personnel to be able to respond to that.
Okay.
And if the DOH, you know, if they call us, if they need help, if they're shorthanded, I mean, we can do that.
Okay, that's, that's why I needed Claire. Okay, thanks, that's all I had.
Any other questions?
No.
Mayor, I think we talked about this in the last hearing, but I just wanted to get confirmation. As you probably are aware, there's going to be some major construction going on in that area with the revamp of 155. And I think we brought this up to the last meeting, correct? But, but is it, is it the city's intent to garner any BNO taxes on that construction?
It's in that letter that we won't.
And I know it was clarified somewhere, I just wanted to, to make sure that I, I brought that point up.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, good. At this time, then, we will close the public hearing. We have decided that we will take a vote on this matter next meeting. So we will proceed now with the regular agenda.
Just clarification, we.
Yes.
It may not be next meeting, because we're going to take a vote.
True.
Once we, once we all come up with our own.
Yes.
We have to issue an order that gives our decision, so that may be delayed.
Next, Colleen Coon. We don't have any grants. Okay. Any correspondence?
Do you want to wait a second, just till people leave? Why don't you wait a sec, and allow the people to leave, that way?
Okay.
See you all later.
Can I ask one question?
No, the, the hearing's over. Sorry.
Because that's the law.
That's the way the hearing is conducted. Okay. Correspondents?
You could shut the door, yeah. Now it's a normal meeting.
Are you ready now?
I am ready now.
Okay.
Are you ready now?
Yes.
Thank you. Correspondents?
We received a letter from the Scotts-run Settlement House in the mail regarding the $10,000 that the commission provided in grant funding, and they have received that money after they have submitted their request for reimbursement.
Pit? Any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll proceed to new business. A, consideration of a letter of support, as requested by the Montague County Board of Health, in regards to the Healthiest Cities and Counties Challenge.
This is a grant that the Health Department is Healthy Cities Grant that they're applying for, and they asked us for a letter of support. If you recall, we mentioned, it's in the last meeting, that they had sent this in request, it didn't meet the time for, to be on the agenda last week. So we sent them the, the letter unsigned, indicating we'd take it up today, and I would move that we approve this letter as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, consider for approval requisition number 25 for the Morgantown Industrial Park Series 2017 A Project Fund.
The request is for $67,918.93, and $40,000 will be paid to Adrian Enterprises for Project Management. $27,918.93 will be paid to Stone Paving.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
C, to consider request by Main Street Morgantown and League of Women Voters for use of the Courthouse Square on various dates. Do we have those dates?
Yes. The League of Women Voters has requested August the 29th, 2020, and that would be for the 100th Anniversary Party. And the Main Street Morgantown has several. They are requesting March 6th, from 5 to 9, and that is for the March Arts Walk. April 3rd is the Arts, April Arts Walk. May 1st is the May Arts Walk. June 5th, June Pride Arts Walk. July 3rd is July Arts Walk. August 7th is August Arts Walk. September 4th is September, and November 6th will be for November.
Okay.
Move to approve courthouse request dates as submitted.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, consideration of approval to engage Snell and Wilmer LLP Law Firm to provide legal services in connection with the excise tax revenue bonds to be issued for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District, and authorizing President of the Commission to execute, excuse me, such engagement letters and other agreements that may be necessary in conjunction with said services.
I can speak to this. This is a, an agreement that, this is a legacy issue. We had a, a part of a law firm that was working on a lot of our bond issue, the individuals moving on, so rather than have, bring in somebody else and have to recreate the will, we want to put an agreement in place, so that they can continue the services through, through finalization. It's really just saves us money, and there's no additional amount. These, these funds come out of the, the bond proceeds, but the, the legal portion of it, it's not going to cause any additional cost. Move that we approve the, is it the, approve the President to be able to enter into an engagement letter and any other agreements that are necessary in connection with this.
You didn't want to say execute. Second, it's been properly moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Reports from elected officials. Carrie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is that time of year again, and it's, it's nice to be here when you were doing the proclamation for the 100th Anniversary of the 19th Amendment. I have several election-related items to bring to your attention, many routine in nature. Our precincts, we have secured all of the same precincts that we've used in the past elections. We have 41 precincts in Montague County at 29 different locations, so I have a list of those, but they are all the same. There's been no changes. Each of the political parties in Montague County, the Democratic Political Party and the Republican Political Party, have submitted their poll workers for use in the May 12th primary election. So I have those names for you. Once you approve these names, then our office begins filling any vacancies. We will be putting, appointing 205, roughly, people to be working at the 41 precincts for the May primary election, and that includes also all of the workers for our early voting locations. We will be operating five early voting locations for the May primary election. They, four of those locations are, if you remember from the 2018 election, they're the same locations. And usually, in a presidential election, I try to get an additional early voting site. I believe that we, we run more early voting locations than, than any other county in the, in the state. But we have secured an additional site for this election at Fort Pierpont. We've previously been in the Pierpont area, so that we try to strategically place our early voting sites in, at the main arteries of how people travel to and from, in and out of the Morgantown, as, so that we can, or they can access a voting location on their way to and from work. So our early voting locations will be at the Mountaineer Mall, of course, that's our main facility. Mason Dixon Park on the western end of Route 7. Westover Community Center, right off of Route 19 there, as you're coming into Westover. The WVU Alumni Center in Suncrest, off of Patterson Drive, and Fort Pierpont, which is close to the Planet Fitness, that location. We previously were in the Pierpont Landing location, which is closer to the interstate. But we have been very pleased that Cheap Road LLC, which is Rick and Alex Beifor, have worked with us again to secure a location. So I do have an agreement for that space. They are not charging us for that space for the time period that we will be there, but they, we do need to sign an agreement for that location. We also have to reaffirm our emergency absentee voting policy. This commission has an emergency absentee voting policy in place that they have had since 2004, and we have operated under those guidelines. And so we just have to reaffirm it. They did have some changes to the law. If you recall, last, I think in the 2019 legislative session, they had a bill up that would allow commissions, if it was their purview, to go into the homes of private individuals to conduct absentee voting. And it is my hope that this commission will just reaffirm our current policy, which is to go to the two hospitals located within our borders, and the nursing homes, if the voter was confined to a nursing home after the period, to apply for a mail absentee ballot, so that our emergency ballot commissioners would be going to hospitals or licensed nursing facilities, and not be going to, into an individual's home. I think that there's a certain amount of security in today's age that goes along with that, and we certainly will, will work with any of our voters to make sure that they get their ballot. That's, that's not going to be an issue. But I would like to read this policy. I did pull out and, and just basically copied over the same policy that the commission approved in 2004. It says, "Whereas the West Virginia Code 335C authorizes county commissions in West Virginia to adopt a policy extending emergency voting procedures in their county, and whereas this commission has operated under an emergency absentee voting policy since February the 4th, 2004. And whereas it is the opinion of this commission that the reaffirmation of such policy would benefit the citizens of Montague County, the following policy is hereby reaffirmed by this commission: A person qualified to vote an absentee voter's ballot as defined by West Virginia Code 331, and who is confined on the day of the election in hospitals within Montague County only, or duly licensed nursing homes within Montague County; and the qualified voter was placed in such hospital or nursing home after the deadline to apply for an absentee ballot by mail, or appear in person to cast a ballot during the period of early voting; may vote an absentee voter's ballot under the procedure set forth in West Virginia Code 335C." So, have that.
Do we need to place this on the agenda, or?
Can we move that?
Action upon this.
Well, in the past, we have, she's reported it, and we've, we've approved it at that point.
Yeah.
So you look for, is there, would there be an issue if we put it on, if we just put this on the ballot? Do you want approval, you need approval now?
No, I, I don't think so. Once you approve it, once you approve it and sign it, I just sent a copy to the Secretary of State. They keep it on file in case there is a complaint lodged, so that they know what the commission's policy is.
Yeah, so it's official.
Plus whatever.
Carrie, three things. List poll workers, list of precincts, and the, or emergency absentee voting policy.
Yeah, I had, I had sent, I had sent the list of things that needed an approval to Renetta on Monday.
Okay.
So it was the, the list of poll workers. With your approval, we're going to go ahead and start trying to fill those vacancies. But the poll workers, the precincts, the early voting locations, I, I would need a signature on the agreement for the early voting site. I wanted to also tell you, I'm sorry to be so lengthy, but I was sort of saving up all my things. The ballot commissioners have been appointed by the Democratic and Republican Party, so your ballot commissioners that you will be working with for this year will be Paula Martinelli for the Republican Party, and Peter Gegenbach for the Democratic Party. We have provided to our election vendor the levy orders that the commission approved on February the 19th, so they would be working on getting our ballot compiled. Absentee balloting is underway right now, and we are taking applications for those ballots. Absentee ballots will begin to be mailed to voters beginning on March the 27th. So, you know, hopefully, we will be having a Board of Ballot Commissioners meeting. I've tentatively scheduled one for next week, in the hopes that we may have the majority of our information back from the ballot vendor. But as, you know, we discussed when you were doing the levy orders, when we wait, waited so long, it sort of crunches the vendor, because they're trying to do it for 55 counties. So we'll play that by ear, and, and I've notified the ballot commissioners of that. But a couple of dates for you all to put on your calendars. Public testing for early voting and election day will be April the 22nd at 2:00 at our election center, and that is open to the public, if someone would like to come. And May 12th, of course, is the primary election. And then May 18th is the Monday following the primary election, when we will be canvassing. Again, at the election center, we'll begin at 10:00. So those are just dates and times that you would need to build into your calendar, so you know when and where to be.
Okay.
Uh, 2:00.
2:00.
In the afternoon. There are, I have a list, a tentative dates of interest, and everything that I'm speaking to you about today also is located on our website at montaguecounteclerk.com. All of the, our precinct locations, all of our early voting sites, our absentee ballot information, our voter registration information. We've been getting a lot of calls. We've been getting a lot of calls. Our plastic cards that we printed for the 2018 election were very popular, and we are going to reprint those again. We're going to try to do those in-house. I've been holding off doing that because I did not want to send them out so far in advance of the election. Human nature is, people tend to lose these things, and they are pretty expensive to, to send out. So, we will be sending those out, but anyone, whether they have one of our nice plastic cards or not, can, they can check their voter registration online, and they can appear to vote at the polls. So, I don't want anyone to think that because they don't have one of the new shiny cards or something like that, that they, they should not show up. We are encouraging everyone to take advantage of the early voting period or the absentee ballot period. If they have, are of an advanced age and have a reason to apply for an absentee ballot, I encourage that. We've listened to the Health Department speak about the concerns. I've had several calls from voters who have been concerned about the spread of the flu, the spread of the coronavirus, and, and they are being discouraged from going into large public gatherings. So, early voting is a, a smaller contained environment that we can control, so I encourage people to take advantage of early voting. Come out at their convenience. There's five different locations. Like I said, we, if, if you can, make yourself available to early voting or an absentee ballot, take advantage of that. We are, our office is also doing a lot of outreach. We have been going to libraries, the mall, we've been at WVU, going out to locations where the public is generally traveling. We will be going to Walmart, we will be going to different places to take voter registration changes, to answer questions for the public that they have about the upcoming election. I think that there's a lot of misinformation that's being, that they're seeing from the national news media or statewide news media that does not apply here, and I want to make sure that everybody in our county is comfortable with their voter registration, with the election process. If they have any questions, we're certainly going to answer those, and to make sure that, you know, we continue to have a good turnout for our elections, so. And the fact that the primary is an extremely important election. I think many voters, especially our older voters, who typically have, may not have participated in a primary because it has always been thought to be just a party nominating process. They have not voted in the primary and have waited to vote in the general election. A primary is not the same kind of a primary that it used to be. These primaries today are general elections for the Board of Education.
Right.
For the judges, Supreme Court, Circuit Judges, Magistrates, for our levies, for Conservation District Supervisor. There are several important nonpartisan races that are on the primary election ballot that will not be on the general election ballot. So, if voters do not come out to the primary, they're going to miss an opportunity to vote on several of these important contests. That's another reason why we're trying to do as much education and outreach as we possibly can, because I think it's important to spread that word.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Carrie, we, we do appreciate, and we do know how hard you work, and how difficult you, how easy you make a difficult procedure of elections, okay? So, thank you very much.
We appreciate your information, too, so we know what's going on.
Yes. Is there any other report from elected officials? Seeing none, we'll go to county commissioners. Tom?
Yeah, first, I was fortunate last week. Montague County had the Big 12 Swimming Competition, and I was unfortunately one of the timers, but extremely exciting. Unfortunately, Mother Nature decided to pull a curve right before the preliminaries. We had that ice storm, and I personally want to thank Darby Clayton and Dave McCormick, who got the roads cleared, so the buses that were stuck at the bottom of Chaplain Hill were able to get there, and as I talked to different representatives from Texas and TC and Kansas, could not believe our facility, even several of the Texas people said it was nicer than their facility, and they want to come back. So, we really made a nice impression, and I think it also brought in a lot of new economic dollars, that the hotels were filled, the restaurants were done, so it was a very positive experience. I also met, as I said, with the city to discuss questions and concerns about the new Aldi's and the roadway there. I can tell you that Aldi's is planning to open up at that Hartman Run, Earl Corps Road. Their goal is June 1st, and they will be closing the other Aldi's. That's all I can say at this time. We also had our meeting about recycling, and I, I do want to thank Ben Conley for, he did an excellent article, which the bottom line is, we need to get a clarification of what WVU's doing, the City of Morgantown, and what the county's doing, because it seems to be mixed messages from Republican. We need to clarify this, because there's some real concerns about the future of recycling, and we need to all work together, because it ends up in the same spot. So, that was done. And finally, the people need to start getting ready. You'll be getting information about the census. It is real important that we get the people to fill out the census, because that's how we get our dollars, federally, state, and locally, and we can't say enough about the people filling out the census form.
Sean?
Thank you. Since the last meeting, Friday, we had staff meetings, and then we spent the day doing grant evaluations. We had 64 val- 64 grants this year, and I think for the first time, well, first time in my experience, we got through them in one day.
One day.
So, we, thank you to our staff for making it such a very smooth process. Saturday, I worked the Empty Bowls event, and it was, as, as, as previous years, it's just a wonderful event. It's just heartwarming to see the community come out to have lunch in support of a good cause. You know, lots of, you know, lots of admiration to the people that have put that on and have worked it to get it to where it's at. It's just a wonderful event. Monday, I had a meeting with Russ Rogerson, our, the Morgantown Area Partnership Director and the Morgantown Industrial Park, discussing things in regards to the industrial park and some, some, some things we may have, that may actually come to light in the future, additional projects in the parks. It was a very, very informative meeting. Yesterday, we had our tour of the Ramada Inn project to kind of get an update to where it's at. The update is, is there's still a long way to go. They need to do a, a needs assessment. There, people came in from Huntington, they belong to a group called City of Solutions, and they've done some of this work other, elsewhere, so they're going to do a needs assessment, and then the, as of right now, the school being needs is going to do a, a business plan, so that we can get to the point where, okay, what are we talking about? Who's involved? What's, how are we going to make this project work? There's a lot of potential, but it is a huge, it is a huge project. Last night, we also had a special meeting with the Board of Education, I think, not with the, with a few members of the Board of Education. It was not an official meeting on their standpoint, but also the sheriff and tax office and the assessor attended, so we were able to, hopefully we'll have some good news coming out in regards to that. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow, we have a jail bill working meeting. Friday, we have a meeting with staff, and then in the afternoon, I have a meeting with the Development Authority Building Committee. Thank you, ladies, for coming today. You know, the, the passage of the 19th Amendment is probably, is 19th, right? Is, it's not only an important date for women, it's an important date for this country. I've been lucky to be surrounded by powerful women all my life that have actually helped me to where I'm at, and I don't hesitate to appreciate the accomplishments of women in this country, in this state, so I really appreciate you guys coming. You know, the old saying, behind every successful man, there's a, there's a woman that has got them to where they're at. You know, the people who have hired me and my jobs have been, have been women, you know, so I appreciate everything you do, and I appreciate the, you know, the, the women we're surrounded by, Kelly, Renetta, Colleen, Carrie, that helped run this county, so anyhow. Carrie, thank you very much. Very detailed, as always, and, you know, election time's an exciting time, but in this county, we know, we know that it's all under control, because you have your, you have control of everything. So, and I appreciate all the people that came out for the Granville hearing. We do take this seriously. We, we weigh everything, we look at everything, and we will give this thoughtful consideration, and when we come to a decision, everybody will understand, you know, whether even if we disagree, you'll understand where we're coming from, so thank you.
And can I just add, and I do want to compliment, one of the two individuals here, Vicki Connor, is the guru of the grant writing for the Pantry Plus More program. She has brought in hundreds of thousands of dollars to this community, and I just want to personally thank you, because we couldn't do it without you, so I do appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And my personal thanks. I, I tried to say that, you know, I, I've always been helped by all the ladies who have been the powerful forces in my life, and when I needed something to get done, that's where I went, and I went to the ladies, because I knew it would get done. I, I think that we have to also do commend DOH for their efforts on that, you know, that was, and I think also brought up the fact that now we have to make a consideration for event planning, so that DOH does understand when a major event is going on, that if there's a snowstorm or there's another issue that we have to deal with, that, that certainly, we'll, we'll make sure that-
We've learned.
Yes, we've learned a lesson here. That's a, you know, it wasn't, and there was no real injury, so a good lesson to learn. Saturday's Empty Bowls, I was privileged to be able to work the, the bowl room as a ticket master. I got to see so many wonderful people, previous patients, I had really a great time. I said and thought to myself, with the, with the coronavirus, taking a ticket from some 2,000 or 3,000 people each time, if I didn't catch anything, then I am certainly, you know, blessed indeed. Monday, I was 4H All-Star and Leaders Meeting. As Sean said, we do have the jail bill working, but after the jail bill, I'm going to go to read aloud to Cheat Lake. So, I have my books already selected, I've selected three. It's really hard, because I have an extensive library of children's books. Then on Monday evening is the Extension Services meeting, and I'd like to end with congratulating the UHS girls, and particularly the MHS girls that I listened to last night in a rousing upset as they advance into tournament play. That being said, I'll have the motion for adjournment.
Moved to adjourn, second?
We are adjourned. Thank you.